And I would like to ask everybody to stand as we pledge allegiance that will be led by Mr. Joe Edwards, our councilman.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the prayer tonight. We're fortunate to have Laura Ballinger with Christ United Methodist Church with us this evening.
Thank you, and God bless you, and thank you for inviting me tonight. Could we all bow our heads out of respect for the Lord as we invoke his presence for this evening's assembly? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have granted those of us gathered here this evening. You have instructed us through your word, the Bible, regarding praying for our leaders by saying, first of all then, I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. Also, you have expressed in your word that it is your desire that all people come to the saving knowledge of the Lord Jesus Christ. When this happens, leaders become filled with your spirit, who then directs and guides us into all truth, thus enabling leaders to make decisions in accordance with your will, and this benefits all the people. We ask for your wisdom from on high to help our leaders with the many requests that come their way. Help this assembly to represent the people well and in a way that brings you, Lord, honor and glory. After all, the Bible also says, you say in your word, that government leaders are ultimately given their authority by you. So we acknowledge your sovereign authority over this assembly here this evening and invite your presiding presence more and more, for it's in the precious name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, that I ask all these things. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 All right. Thank you. The chair will note that there are no changes to the agenda, so we'll proceed with approval of the minutes. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve the August 13 minutes.
Move that we accept the August 13, 2018 minutes into the record as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Bob Horkey and a second by Joe Edwards. Any additions or corrections? None are noted, so I've asked the council to approve the city council minutes for August 13th as stated by signifying by saying aye. Aye.
One abstention?
And, okay.
Cindy.
All right, so we have, the minutes stand approved. We have a vote of six. We have four, one abstention, and zero against. So the minutes are approved. Moving on to claims. I'd ask for a motion to approve claims. Notice there are two docket's tonight. We'll approve both at the same time. There was a supplementary docket that came out later today.
Move to approve the docket, claims.
Okay. I have a motion to approve claims as stated by Mark Keen. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Bob Horkey. Are there any additions, corrections, or questions about claims? Hearing none, I'd call for a voice vote to approve claims as stated. All those in favor approving claims signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Claims are approved, seven to zero. All right, this time, there are no miscellaneous special presentations, so we'll start with old business. And before us is ordinance 18-24, Grassy Branch Marketplace PUD. Dane, thank you.
Evening, council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you is ordinance 18-24, proposal known as the Grassy Branch Marketplace Planned Unit Development, which is located at the northeast corner of State Road 32 and Grassy Branch Road. The item was introduced at the June 11th city council meeting, received a public hearing at the July 16th Plan Commission Meeting, received a unanimous favorable recommendation at the August 20th Plan Commission Meeting, and is available for adoption consideration this evening. Since this introduction, the petitioner has flipped the project so that the proposed gym now sits on the west side of the property of Lot 4, and has also made revisions to the landscape plan. Other than those items, it remains largely the same as when it was introduced. Eric Dowthitt from Sherwood Church, Hiddle and Antrim is present this evening, would like to make a brief presentation. Afterwards, I'll be available if there are questions of staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the council, Eric Dowthitt. I'd just like to briefly touch upon some of the changes we've made since introduction so we can highlight those for you. As Dane indicated, the first big change is the gym initially was on the east side. We'd switched that at the request of some of the homeowners. Also, the back set, the setback under the present zoning could be as little as 15 feet. We've agreed to extend that from the original 30 feet we had to 40 feet, so we've extended that setback. We've also included and improved the landscaping along this side as well. I think that we've been able to meet most of the requests with regards to what the homeowners' association and the homeowners wanted. We've met with them multiple times, and we're very pleased with the result. I think this is going to be great development. And this was the only thing I really wanted to talk about. There were some other changes as well, but most of those focused on the Westfield lighting place, and we removed the signed request that we initially had. I'll be available for any additional questions if you've got them.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for the petitioner? All right, hearing none, this is up for adoption consideration. I'd entertain a motion.
Move that we approve ordinance 18-24, the Grassy Branch Marketplace PUD.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And I have a motion by Bob Horkey and a second by Steve Hoover. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, will the clerk please poll council? Yes.
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 Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Dane. The next item under old business, the ordinance 18-28, 181st Street PUD Amendment. Dane presenting.
Good evening again, council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you is ordinance 18-28, proposed amendment to the 181st Street Planned Unit Development, which is located on the south side of 181st Street between Wheeler Road and US Highway 31. As you may recall, from its June 29th introduction, the amendment proposes modifying the development and use sequence so that the new compliance date be December 31st, 2028. Public hearing for this item was held at the August 6th Plan Commission Meeting and received a unanimous favorable recommendation at the September 4th Plan Commission Meeting. This item is eligible for adoption consideration this evening. Eric Dowthitt from Sherwood Church, Hiddle and Antrim is present this evening on behalf of the petitioner. He does not plan to make a presentation, but is available for questions, and I am available if there are questions of staff. Thank you.
Does council have any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance 18-28, 181st Street PUD Amendment.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Lehman. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to poll council, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, thank you. Next item up is ordinance 18-29, cottages on East Street. Caleb?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Caleb Ernest with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item presented before you is the planned unit development being called cottages on East PUD. The PUD proposes a change in zoning from SF3 to the cottages on East PUD District. Since the project was introduced, the concept plan has been revised to show additional landscaping, privacy fencing, roof lines, and dimensions. Also, text in the development standards section has been added to modify the light shielding on the west side of the proposed units. This project has received a public hearing on the August 6th Plan Commission Meeting and received a favorable recommendation on the September 4th Plan Commission Meeting. This proposal is eligible for council adoption tonight. The petitioner is represented here tonight and can answer any questions you have, and I'm available should you have any questions for staff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Caleb. Any questions from this body for the petitioner? Again, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion by Joe Edwards. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Horkey. Any further discussion among council members? All right, hearing none, will clerk please call the record? Poll council?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 18-109, fiscal plan for annexation. Ordinance 1830, Osborne Trails Phase 3. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, good evening. For the record, Kevin Todd with the Economic and Community Development Department. The next two items on your agenda are related to the 100% voluntary annexation request for the Osborne Trails Phase 3, approximately 17 acres in size. The first item is a resolution for the fiscal plan and has been uploaded to your agenda for your consideration this evening, and the second item is the annexation ordinance itself. A public hearing was held at your last meeting for the annexation ordinance, and this, and at this time, both items are eligible for action this evening. If you have any questions, I'm available at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Does council have any questions for Kevin?
Is there still an additional phase to come?
Yeah, at least one more.
At least one more?
Any others? All right, we'll take ordinance 18-30, or excuse me, 18-109 fiscal plan first. I'd entertain a motion to approve the fiscal plan.
Move to approve Resolution 18-109.
Okay. Have a motion by...
Second.
And a second. I have a motion by Dr. Keen and a second by Mr. Hoover, is that correct?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All right, will the clerk please poll council?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. And the second part of this is the ordinance 18-30, 100% voluntary annexation, Osborne Trails Phase 3. I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance 1830, 100% voluntary annexation of Osborne Trails Phase 3.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Bob Horkey and a second by Cindy Spuljeric. Any discussion among council? This is up for adoption, so will the clerk please call the roll? Yes.
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 All right, thank you. The next item up for consideration tonight is ordinance 18-32, the Trails PUD Amendment 2. Kevin Todd presenting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, for the record, Kevin Todd, Economic and Community Development Department. Good evening. This item before you is a request to amend the Trails PUD District, which is located on the south side of State Road 32, generally between Oak Ridge Road and the Monon Trail. This item was introduced at your August 13th meeting. Since that time, there's been two modifications to the proposal. The first is a modification to the rear facade of the proposed family entertainment center. There were some architectural enhancements that were added to that building. And secondly, there's been language added to the PUD ordinance that specifically requires screening for wall-mounted utility meters. This item comes to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Advisory Plan Commission. The petitioner is here this evening, does not plan to make a presentation, but is available for any questions that you may have, as am I. So at this time, the item before you is eligible for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Does council have any questions for either Kevin or the petitioner?
I have one.
Okay.
I'm not sure who can answer this, but in the changes with the architecture, there's a faux, it says faux wood trespa panel, corner element, element. Can you explain to me what that is? I have no idea what that is. Sorry, Jesse.
Is there a better exhibit?
I don't have a better exhibit, and I'm not sure I have a great answer to that question. My understanding is it's simply a faux wood panel that is, that looks like wood, but similar to a veneer. But, so it's got the visualization that's a wood panel.
What is it made out of? I mean, is this going to be compliant with the building standards that we have?
This exhibit, this elevation replaces those standards specific to just this use in building. So if this use were constructed or moved forward, this would be the building that will be built forward, or would be similar or greater than the character shown in this exhibit.
And the reason I'm interested is, from not knowing what this stuff is, it just gives me some pause because I don't know if this is an ethos-like product that we typically wouldn't allow on a first-floor situation, so, and I didn't realize this, when I first looked at this, I thought it was actually either a hardy plank or something else.
And is it a durability question? Is that, is that the question? We can definitely ask the architect and clarify what the material is and send that to you here after the fact. If there's concerns about the durability, I'm sure we can look at it and revise it if it's something that's not appropriate at a pedestrian level.
Okay, because that, that would be a concern for me.
Sure.
All right, we've done some research up here quickly. Mr. Horkey, Councilman Horkey.
Benefit of the computer.
Quickly looking at here.
Shed some light on this.
Manufacturer describes it as a high-quality HPL, high-pressure laminate panel. There are some examples of it on a very attractive-looking exterior building as a cladding, so there's a lot of material here. Certainly can't read it all right now, but it does appear to be a product that's intended for this kind of a purpose.
Feel slightly better?
And I apologize, that was not a material that was on our radar in this conversation.
Whenever we're talking about these large structures, I get concerned about their longevity and trying to make sure that we are not dealing with some kind of eyesore if anything falls out of favor, so. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Tim was just pointing out too, there's a statement in here from Mike Yurkovich, principal of Jill's Hole Development. There was an overall sense of superior quality. So whoever this gym is and whatever this building is that's featured on their website, he was...
It's in quotes, it must be so, right?
He was extremely impressed.
Some yelp reviews.
Kelly knows a lot more than me about this stuff.
He might. I mean, he knows more than all of us up here, but, you know, we're expecting it's going to be just like this picture on this website now.
Good question. Any others? All right, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for the Trails.
Move for approval of ordinance 18-32.
I have a motion by Mark Keen. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Chuck Lehman. Any further discussion among council? All right. Excuse me? It was Dr. Keen and then Chuck Lehman, Mr. Chuck Lehman. Thank you. All right, will you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Our last item under old business is ordinance 18-35, Andover PUD Amendment. Caleb?
Thank you, President. Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Caleb Ernest with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item presented before you is an amendment to the Andover Planned Unit Development and a continuation of the existing lakes of Westfield subdivision. The PUD proposes an amendment to increase the number of permitted dwelling units and incorporate an additional 22 acres into the Andover PUD. Since the project was introduced, there have been minor modifications to the concept plan, and the text in Section 2 of the proposed ordinance has been modified to reflect the same development standards as the original Andover PUD. This project has received a public hearing and a favorable recommendation on the September 4th Plan Commission Meeting. This proposal is eligible for council adoption tonight, and the petitioner is represented here and can answer any questions you have, as am I. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does council have any questions for petitioner or presenter? All right, I'd entertain a motion for ordinance 18-35.
Move to approve ordinance 18-35, the Andover PUD Amendment.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion before us. It was brought forth by Bob Horkey and seconded by Cindy Spuljeric. Will the clerk please call the roll? Yes.
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 All right. Thank you very much. That concludes our old business for the evening, and as we move into new business, I'd like to open with a couple of comments before we do that. Council has been involved, as has the county, in discussions about housing and what it looks like and where we are in, in not only the county, but also in our city, and we posed some questions to some developers and builders in search of some, some enlightening, just some, some informative information, and then we've asked them to consider some things and what some types of housing might look like in light of the discussion that's happening in the county. There's some thought about some multi-level options within developments, variety, and so we started looking for ideas and went out and looked at some statistics, which I'd like to share with you before we get into the next item, about the housing and what it looks like in, in our county in Westfield, and this comes from the Builders Association of Greater Indianapolis. The acronym is BAGI. But what does affordable, attainable housing look like? The data supports the need for attainable housing in Westfield. The median new home closing price in Westfield's upwards of $336,000. The median existing home closing price in Westfield is upwards of $267,000. 41% of Hammond County's population earns wages to allow them to own a home under $200,000, far below the median home prices. In the last year, the number of existing home sales in the 160 to 240 range far exceeded others. We checked today in Washington Township. In our township, there are only 15 homes for sale in that price range. That is very low inventory. And if you could flip to the next slide, please? Westfield is working to be a place where families can grow and prosper. Offering a variety of entry points into our housing market is important. As we grow our economy and the need for workers and for citizens alike, this project that we're about to hear from Lindley Run will offer our current and future workforce opportunities to live in Westfield. Next, next slide, please. We are not alone. The lack of attainable housing is a regional problem. Local market research shows more than 50% of the demand for new single-family homes in central Indiana is for homes under $250,000. We face a very real problem of providing homes for the hard-working people in our communities. We can do something, and offering quality options is what we want to do here in Westfield. And so I'd like to just conclude those opening remarks to frame the discussion a little bit, and we have been working with Lindley and others to come up with some solutions and to take a look at this as an opportunity for our community and for all our citizens. Thank you for putting up with that presentation. If councillors like to chime in if you have any thoughts before we get started?
I think it's, I think probably it's also important to realize that the schools' demographic study that they did shows elementary-age schools' population is starting to decline in about three years because of the lack of entry-level housing for young families. So it's not just a service sector where we were having trouble hiring people in the service sector. Our schools are going to start suffering because we're going to start having empty classrooms at the elementary level. We have plenty of, plenty of families moving in from middle school and high school, but the elementary, the, the study shows that, and obviously the, the cost of housing impacts that. And I also think attracting commercial development to help our tax base, the number of rooftops does have an enormous impact upon commercial development, and not just from the standpoint of people using that develop, using that retail establishment or commercial establishment, but also having staffing to go on in that, in that area. So it's a multifaceted problem. There's no single solution to it, but certainly having people living in your community gives you the opportunity to have some people who might work in that sector and add to the commercial base and also add to the range of diversity within the community, at least economic diversity. So I think it's a very important thing that we, we're looking at this.
Thank you, Mark.
I think some of the things that I have noted as we have delved into this housing situation a little bit is that many of our, many of our teachers and public safety workers and many other workers, even people that work for the city, can't really afford to live. They can't find housing in Westfield. And as we continue to grow, we continue to attract more businesses, employees are critical to those businesses, and we need to, we are certainly offering housing, but we are not offering what I would call workforce housing. It's, the housing, I mean, most of our projects get approved for housing well in excess of $300,000. It has been, I've read several articles in newspapers just over the last few weeks from Fisher's Noblesville. I think there was a township article here in Westfield about the need for housing. So I think we have to address this issue, and we are talking about, this next proposal may introduce some homes in the $150,000 to $200,000 range. Even homes like that require incomes in, in excess of $50,000 a year just to afford those homes. So we have, and, and many of our teachers, that's about where they're at, and so I think it's, it is important for us to continue to grow as a community and a quality community to provide housing. So this is something that we'll be looking at as we evaluate this. The other thing I think is very important is that, to me at least, that we integrate housing and not segregate it, and I think this proposal is a move in that direction where we have asked them to kind of integrate some workforce-type housing in with what would be more typical housing for Westfield over the last five to 10 years. So hopefully, this will go a long way toward addressing some of our problems with housing, and I think we are... And I think we are going to have, there will be a time where this will become critical, and I hope we don't wait, uh, until it does to address it.
Can I add too? I mean, I agree with what's been said, and also when considering a project like this, which is something slightly new for us, given what we've been improving lately, the location and the traffic and stuff are also concerns. We do have the North Point Aurora, uh, formerly Aurora Project that should have a lot of the jobs, uh, that will need this workforce, and that is literally going to be across the street essentially. And there is a planned roundabout at one hundred and ninety-first and Grassy Branch. It's on our capital, um, improvement program, so that will be forthcoming as well. So when you look at all these factors together, this is a good location to consider a project like this with the added density.
Thank you, Cindy.
Some of these projects need to be interspersed within the community. A lot of these get located north of thirty-two, and it would be good to have our new residents interspersed among the community, some south of thirty-two also, which might be pretty difficult to do.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. I, I think the, uh, the overall concept or our goal here is to, to true, truly do community development. This is a project that gave us an opportunity to look at the, the, um, the overall design because of the, um, of the size. It's very difficult to do this in a thirty-acre, uh, site, but this, the size of this and scope of this really gave us an opportunity to step back and look at how we could integrate, uh, amenities and offer, uh, a, a real community feel for a variety of, uh, living options, so. I, I, I thought it was a, it was a good opportunity, uh, to look at this type of, um, multi-level or integrated housing, so those are my comments.
Thank you. There's no further comments. I'd like the petitioner to come forward. The introduction will be, um, oh, 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 sorry, Dane Crabtree.
Evening, council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. For you this evening is an introduction of ordinance eighteen dash seventeen, a proposed residential planned unit development to be known as the Lindley Run PUD, which encompasses approximately a hundred and six and a half acres and is located approximately at the northeast corner of one hundred and ninety-first Street and Grassy Branch Road between one hundred and ninety-first and one hundred and ninety-sixth Street. The existing zoning for the property for which the PUD is proposed is SF-two, single-family low-density. John Dabishewitz of Nelson and Frankenberger is here this evening to make a brief presentation on behalf of the petitioner.
Thanks. Good evening, uh, council members. For the record, my name is John Dabishewitz, a land use professional with the law firm in Nelson and Frankenberger. We represent the petitioner, Oltoff Homes. Uh, present tonight is Todd Oltoff, one of the owners of Oltoff Homes. Jeff Pape also with Oltoff. Jim Schinnerber, an attorney with our office, and other members of our development team. Oltoff has over fifty years of building experience in the state of Indiana, uh, having expanded its operations into the Indianapolis market two years ago in two thousand and sixteen with its first community in Westfield. The matter before you this evening is the introduction of the Lindley Run Plan Unit Development District, which is a rezone request to permit a development of a mixed-use residential neighborhood. As staff indicated, the property is a hundred and seventy acres and currently zoned SF-two residential. The, uh, site plan, which is on display currently, uh, hand-commissioned, uh, council members to your left, as proposed, Lindley Run will incorporate a diverse mix of residential home offerings within three districts. Approximately one hundred and thirty single-family detached homes are included in Area A and Area B. Those are shown here. Area A is the light yellow area here, next to Crossroads Church at the corner of Grassy Branch and one hundred and ninety-first. And the darker yellow area is Area B, and that's both single-family detached dwellings. District C, the area north of those two that I'm outlining now, bordered by one hundred and ninety-sixth on the north and Grassy Branch by the east. That area C includes approximately three hundred attached for-sale townhomes and duplex dwellings. A total of approximately sixty duplexes and two hundred and forty townhome dwellings. The townhomes will serve, uh, from alleys with the front of the dwelling facing the perimeter streets. The duplex dwellings are located interior to the site in the area shown in blue. Access to the neighborhood will be from primary entrances off both Grassy Branch and one hundred and ninety-first Street with a secondary connection via a stub street to the existing Schofield Farms to our east. Lindley Run will provide over twenty-five percent open space, including large landscape buffer areas. A unique landscaping plan includes specifically positioned native plantings and a detailed four-board fence along the site perimeter. Both passive and active amenities are also provided. Amenities will include a large picnic shelter, community fire pit, fitness trail that will include multiple fitness stations and a large playground, which we are fully detailed in your ordinance. Regarding the home products within the community, the residential product types associated with the proposal will satisfy the goal of aging in place by offering numerous and diverse housing options. As indicated, these options include townhomes, duplexes, detached ranch homes, and two-story detached homes, which serve all residential segments of first-time buyers to second and third-time homes, as well as downsizing for empty nesters in our community. All home products will have high architectural standards, which are also detailed in the ordinance. The villas are ranch-style home, again to your left, council members, audience to your right, those located in the light yellow area here, will, are anticipated to sell in the mid-two hundreds. The homes within Area B, those adjacent to Schofield, Schofield is the neighborhood to our east, those lots in yellow. Those homes within Area B are a mix of ranches and two-story homes that can accommodate three-stall garages. Those homes in Area B are anticipated to be in the low to mid-three hundreds. The duplex area, the area in blue on the plan, the paired villas, uh, and townhomes can be found within Area C, north and east. Uh, as indicated by one of the council members, the North Point Development is immediately adjacent, catty-corner from our site here. Uh, the paired villas, again, the area in B is anticipated to sell in the low-two hundreds. The townhomes offer a variety of color and building materials, complemented with extensive landscaping packages which will result in attractive investment for, in our community. Each individually for-sale townhome will include a detached alley-low two-star garage and extra parking for guests. These individual townhome dwellings will start out in the one-fifties, one hundred and fifty thousand and above, and the average is expected to be in the high-one hundreds. In conclusion, Lindley Run will foster and encourage the concept of aging in place, providing a diverse active and passive amenities and implement multiple housing options lacking in our community today, as evidenced by the comments we just received earlier from council members. Later this month, we will conduct a formal neighborhood meeting in advance of the Plan Commission meeting on October first. Of course, October first is the public hearing in front of the Plan Commission. We will provide notice to council members of both our neighborhood meeting as well as the October first Plan Commission meeting. Oltoff is looking forward to the opportunity to provide the proposed range of product types presented this evening. With that, we'll conclude. We'd be glad to address any additional questions the council may have, and of course, take your suggestions for additional consideration that we would present to the Plan Commission and consider in the process moving forward prior to returning back to you for adoption consideration, perhaps if all things play out sometime in the month of November or early December. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Does council have any questions for petitioner?
I, I would like to ask that you consider a swimming pool as one of your amenities. Uh, I think with the, with the addition of the townhomes in particular and the density there and the small yards that they will afford, I think, uh, open space and amenities become much more important than if this were a typical neighborhood. So that's something I think as we move this through the process that, uh, would be important to me to include.
To echo what Steve said, I think it just helps build a sense of community and ownership and value. I think would aid in your sales as well. I think that's a good suggestion, Steve.
With that many units, it does seem reasonable. I know that's going to add overall, which is one of the things that we were concerned about though, was keeping the HOA fees and any other fees low, um, to maintain the affordability. But I think with this number of units, it should be possible to have it and not be too costly. I don't know that it needs to be a huge resort setup. But I think it'd be valid.
Can I add one more thing too? Right now, the rear yards in Section A are facing, um, one hundred and ninety-first Street. And one of my pet peeves, you know, with that, especially being a primary arterial, I prefer that, that that site plan be reworked to have those, um, front elevations facing the road.
We appreciate that input. We'll move forward to the Plan Commission, uh, hopefully be able to provide responses on these two items uh, as part of our presentation to the Plan Commission meeting, and, uh, report back to the council with the determination made on the request that we received.
John. Jim, I have another question too. I know Oltoff has experience in these types of communities. Could you, somewhere along the line, give us a rough idea when built out, what, what we might expect as a total, uh, total population or total number of residents, people that would live here, okay? I mean, obviously, we can't know exactly, but just kind of a demographic breakdown?
We'll, we'll provide, uh, something in advance of the Plan Commission meeting that takes into account their experience in the other communities.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, John, thank you.
Thank you.
The APC. All right, uh, next item under new business is ordinance eighteen dash thirty-six, amending the traffic regulations of the city of Westfield.
John Nail, City Engineer, City of Westfield. Uh, ordinance eighteen thirty-six is our semi-annual update to the traffic regulation ordinance. Uh, these updates include yearly update for roads that the city has taken ownership of since the previous amendment. This includes several residential subdivisions as listed. It also includes additional no-parking areas outside of subdivisions, namely one hundred and ninety-sixth Street cul-de-sac west of US thirty-one on the north side, South Cherry Street from State Road thirty-two to Midland Trail on both sides, and Spring Mill Road from one hundred and eighty-sixth Street to one hundred and ninety-first Street on the east side. Spring Mill Road, uh, that is due to Grand Park, uh, after discussions with Chief Rush. Uh, there seem to be people that like to park there instead of using the parking lot. We'd like to encourage them to use the, uh, provided parking lots at, at Grand Park. Uh, stop control changes include, uh, going from a two-way stop to a four-way stop at Little Eagle, Little Eagle Creek Avenue and one hundred and sixty-sixth Street. Uh, this was due to a safety audit, uh, for intersection site distance, uh, and we felt that this intersection would, uh, improve greatly from a safety standpoint by adding four-way stops. Similarly, Sun Park Drive northbound and Sun Park Drive westbound, uh, adding a second stop sign to control left-turn conflicts. Additionally, Ditch Road and Somerville Drive Roundabout and Market Center Drive from one hundred and fifty-first Street to Redrick Drive, uh, these are private to public streets. And then, second to last, speed limit changes. Uh, this is again was with, uh, coordination with Chief Rush and Westfield Police. Um, we are looking to add a school zone on Union Street from, uh, for Union Bible College from south of college, uh, to just north of Roosevelt Street. This would, uh, reduce the speed limit from thirty to twenty miles per hour. Additionally, Grassy Branch Road from State Road thirty-eight to two hundred and third Street, a reduction from forty-five to thirty-five. Uh, this was due to roadside safety concerns, narrow roadways, no shoulders, uh, an improvement in public safety in that respect. Uh, Spring Mill Road from State Road thirty-two to one hundred and eighty-sixth Street, uh, reducing the speed limit from forty-five to forty. Uh, this, uh, makes Spring Mill consistent with Spring Mill south of State Road thirty-two. And then, north of the roundabout on Spring Mill at one hundred and eighty-sixth Street, reducing that speed limit from forty-five to thirty-five to maintain consistency with perimeter roads around Grand Park. Lastly, school zone speed limit hours are going to be expanded, would like to be expanded, um, to ten AM on the backside. This reflects, uh, Wednesdays, I believe, Westfield's schools start one hour later, so we want to encompass that later start. I'd be happy to take any other questions.
All right, thank you, John. Any questions about, uh, this traffic regulation ordinance? Or regulations?
I have one question. Do we do any kind of traffic study to warrant the decreases that you're aware of?
As far as a speed study? We, we did not do a speed study, but the MUTCD, uh, does allow leniency for, um, environmental considerations as well as roadside safety considerations, and given the narrow roads and, uh, no shoulder, uh, situations in both those locations, we felt it warranted a lower speed.
Anyone else? We will have a chance to further review this. It's up for adoption consideration on September twenty-four. So if there are no further questions, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda is ordinance eighteen dash thirty-eight, Han Plaza PUD introduction.
Evening again, members of the council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. And before you, the introduction of ordinance number eighteen thirty-eight, a proposed commercial and office project known as the Han Plaza Planned Unit Development. Encumphacing approximately twelve and a half acres, this proposed development is located at the southeast corner of, uh, excuse me, the south, yeah, excuse, southeast corner of one hundred and ninety-first and Chad Hill Drive, which is currently zoned agriculture, single-family, and general business. Chatham Commons PUD exists to the north, the Hill at Thirty-One PUD to the east, and general business zone properties to the south, and agriculture, single-family to the west. Jesse Pullman from On Point Land Matters is here to make a brief presentation on behalf of the petitioner.
Thank you, Dane.
Uh, good evening. For the record, Jesse Pullman, uh, with On Point Land Matters. Uh, presenting this evening on behalf of the applicant, Greenwald Development, and I have with me here this evening in the back, Lynn and Aaron Greenwald. Uh, as Mr. Crabtree highlighted, this is a twelve and a half acres on the southeast corner of Chad Hill Drive and one hundred and ninety-first Street. It is currently primarily zoned, the general business district, and is subject to the US Thirty-One overlay. Uh, the request to change the zoning will accommodate the commercial development that we're calling Han Plaza, uh, in name of Frank Han, who's one of the property owners of the project. Um, and is proposed to be complementary to the surrounding Chatham Commons, commercial development to the north, and the Hill at Thirty-One, uh, project and commercial development hotels to the east. Uh, as depicted in the application and exhibits, the proposed ordinance establishes uses and standards that are consistent with other recently adopted ordinances by the city for the gateway intersections of US Thirty-One, uh, including the incorporation of the city's highest commercial architectural standards of the State Road Thirty-two overlay district. The property is located within the area designated by the Comprehensive Plans Family Sports Capital Addendum, which anticipates hotels, restaurants, office, and retail, among other uses, all of which are permitted by this PUD. The property is identified as retail and hospitality by the city's illustrative Grand Park Land Use Plan, as depicted on the exhibits that were presented here this evening. Uh, so in closing, if you have any questions or comments, uh, for us this evening that we can take with us, we'll go through the public process. We'd be happy to, to hear those. Otherwise, we look forward to be back in front of you, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Jesse. Any questions for Jesse or petitioner? I've, I just have one comment, and, and when we look at retail space, you see a lot of, uh, inline shopping centers, and I'd encourage you to be creative on, in that regard. I know from your character exhibits, you have, uh, you have some exhibits with, uh, using offsets to kind of break up that linear feel. But anything you can do to be creative and, and break that up a little bit, uh, I think would be very welcome. But anything you can do to be creative and, and break that up a little bit, I, I think would be very welcome. And I think it, it'll make it that much more appealing to the drive-by traffic and invite people into your space rather than driving by. I'd just like you to consider those kinds of things.
I have one comment. The signage is troubling me a little bit, and I have this comment with other projects in the area as well. Allowing two square feet of sign area for every one linear foot per building facade, not just front facade. So that would just be an awful lot of signage, in my opinion. And again, with the monument sign as well, I think it's just too much.
And we can take a look at that. I'll, I'll double-check on the wall signage. I think the intent was to carry over the same standard that was in place for Chatham Commons as well as Hill at Thirty-One. And so I'll look at that, and then we can talk some more on the, the monument sign.
That's what I get concerned about, the mass effect of this whole, what's turning out to be a very large commercial area with such extensive signage throughout the area is going to get pretty cluttered very fast. Thanks, Jesse.
Anything else? Any other?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Jesse, on, on the south of that property, are there some challenges with drainage here?
Not challenges. The southwest corner, where there's no buildings shown on the conceptual plan, is an identified wooded wetland area. We're anticipating possibly using some of it for, to accommodate some of our storm detention. But aside from that, we don't have any specific drainage issues.
Anything else? All right. Pass on to the APC. Thank you. Ordinance eighteen dash thirty-nine, Stucky Farms PUD. Council introduction. Caleb.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Caleb Vernis with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item presented before you is the planned unit development being called Stucky Farms PUD District. This item is located adjacent and east to Hamilton Boone County Road, and the project area is approximately forty acres. Jesse Pullman of On Point Land Matters is here to make a brief presentation, as available for questions, as am I, if should you have any for staff. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Jesse Pullman. I'm here presenting this evening on behalf of the applicant, Jeff Pierce, who's with me here also this evening with Stucky Farm Orchard and Cider Mill. The request is to change the zoning of the forty acres located on the east side of Hamilton Boone County Road, just north of one hundred and ninety-sixth Street, that consists of forty acres and is all currently being operated as part of the Stucky Farm. The property is currently zoned, the AGSF one district, and the change of zoning is warranted because under the existing UDO, the use is defined as an agritourism use, which is not permitted by right in any zoning district. Stucky Farm's been in operation since the late nineteen sixties, early nineteen seventies, and was previously considered an agricultural use under the city's old zoning ordinance. The site's located within the rural northwest and northeast land use classification of the two thousand and seven Comprehensive Plan, which primarily encourages uses that maintain the rural and countrylike, countrylike atmosphere, including agricultural, artisan farms, and equestrian uses. As proposed, the land use as it exists now and as it will continue into the future will meet the economic and design objectives and policies of the Comprehensive Plan for this land use area. In closing, if you have, in closing, if you have any questions or comments that we can take with us here this night as we move forward through the public process, we'd be happy to answer those for you. And then, for those of you, I do believe you extended the invitation in advance of the October first public hearing, we'll have a neighbors' meeting out at the Stucky Farm Market tomorrow evening at six-thirty. And you're all invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
I just, could I just add a comment? Since I watched something on TV about Stucky Farms, and they refer to themselves as a business in Sheridan, that we kind of, maybe my hair on the back of my neck stand up. It is a Westfield business. It may have a Sheridan mailing address.
Yes.
It's just a little irritating.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Any others? I think it's, it's a wonderful asset to our community, knowing it's in Westfield. And I expect them to do nothing but enhance their operation. And I'm glad to see that they're moving forward with some changes in their modeling. And they're going to have a big convention there next February, I believe.
I believe it's in January. Is it February? In February.
February.
And for those of you that may or may not have been able to attend, it sounds like their recent Sunflower Festival was a big, big success. So if you're able to make it out there, you got to enjoy that. And if not, then it sounds like next year it would be, be around again, so.
Yeah, I think that's exciting because that'll bring a lot of people into our county and expose them to Grand Park and other amenities we have here. So, thank you.
It's certainly got some great press coverage in the Star, so I don't know how you did that, but good job. I, I also noticed the Sheridan address, but the US Post Office does that to us.
Thank you very much.
Pass it on. Thank you, Jesse. All right. Ordinance eighteen dash forty, Grand Junction PUD. Mr. Matt Skelton.
Thank you, members of the council. Before you this evening is ordinance eighteen thirty-four for introduction. This is the, a planned unit development proposal for the Grand Junction Plaza area. Oh, I'm sorry. It's hard as walking chew gum here. There we go. This sets forth, the PUD sets forth a regulatory framework that is very similar to that, which was recently adopted for the Grand Park facility. These are publicly owned lands. The purpose of the PUD is really to clarify the uses that are permitted within this area. Actually, arguably, the, the uses contemplated in your, in your Grand Junction plan are permitted today in a public park. This is just a little bit more of a built environment than a traditional park. So rather than there be any wiggle, you know, room for interpretation, this directs, directly deals with the land use issues head-on, exactly in line with what is contemplated in your plans. And, but it sets forth a scheme where the blue area is the plaza, which as designed, the, you'll have to forgive me, the color looks yellow to me. It could be a different color, but the lightest of the three colors is set aside for right-of-way dedication. This also would result, once platted, in eliminating the existing Park Street corridor that real, currently exists, even though the, most of Park Street is through the plaza is gone now. And then, it also includes the regional water retention basin, which has already been constructed and is in place today in the red area. It, this also eliminates some of the development standard issues associated with the fact that there are, I think, about seventeen parcels that make this whole area up. And, and one of the things that we're needing to do in order to develop the Grand Junction Plaza at some point in the future is to eliminate and replat those parcels. So this would also, also deal with that issue, too, and eliminate any obstacles associated with that. With that, I'm, that's, that's really the purpose of it. This would follow the normal zoning process. It's known as the Grand Junction Plaza PUD because this is the Grand Junction Plaza. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Thank you, man. Any questions for Matt?
I have two. In the area, the southern area, it looks like some of the parcels are bisected. What's going on with that? That it's, they don't follow the parcel lines?
They're not. They're actually that way. I mean, they're, those parcels actually exist, as, as shown. The ones that look like they're bisected are not. They're just odd little pieces of real estate.
But the areas that are falling under this rezone would include portions of these parcels.
Show me what you're talking about. Here?
Yeah.
The, yeah, the, these are separate parcels. It's owned by the City of Westfield today.
I just can't see separate lines?
No, they're, they're there.
Okay. I'll take your word for it.
They're there. I'm, I'm pretty sure. I'll, I will confirm that, but I, it was, it was all done when that land was assembled for regional water retention. And there's just some really odd lot lines with no frontage, just like this one. I guess it, you can get to it from back here, but there's really no frontage. I'll confirm that for you, but I'm pretty sure if we pulled up Flex Map that it would show that way. It wa, it will not include any real estate not owned by the City of Westfield. How's that?
I can confirm, I can confirm for you, yeah.
Thank you.
So when we were acquiring parcels for the regional detention basin, you can see how the, I guess, the long rectangular pieces have, they've all been parceled out and bisected. There were lots of little slivers of piece, pieces. But the, the edge that you see in orange or...
Is this piece right here?
Yes. That is the actual parcel lines for everything. So there's nothing that is shown there that is outside of our property.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you.
The other question I had, and I know this is part of one of our zoning challenges, is not having an institutional or special use category is an underlying zoning to be able, to be applied. So we're using an LBH underlying, which by right would allow actually much more commercial than what I know is included in that plan. So I have a certain level of discomfort with that because we're not specifying the exact uses. We're saying everything in the LBH plus that's, and I mean, that includes daycare centers and, and a host of other things. Is there a way to restrict this to things that we actually contemplate?
Yeah, it's your real estate. You can't, can't, nothing can be done there without your permission. So I mean, that should, that should provide some assurance.
I was wondering why it was worded to have the LBH and these other things.
It was, it was just simple. I mean, it's just simple. Everything else around it is zoned that way. So if there's something in particular that you're afraid that we might do to ourselves, then, yeah, yeah. But I...
Okay. Anyone else? All right. This goes to the APC. Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Ordinance eighteen thirty-four has been continued. So at this time, residents who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda may do so at the present time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Judy Shuck, two oh nine West Main Street, Westfield, Indiana. And I'm representing the Westfield Preservation Alliance tonight. And we are holding this Wednesday night a public meeting at the Westfield Library, the conference room and the basement. We will have Paul Dribble there from the DNR and also Mark Delacy and Sam Burgess from Indiana Landmarks. And Mark and Sam will be there to answer any questions, also along with Paul. But we'd just like to extend an invitation to all, all or any of you to come. It's at six-thirty to eight. And we'll be there.
Thank you, Judy.
That's, that is Wednesday night this week?
Pardon me?
Wednesday evening?
Wednesday this week.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council at this time? See, council comments. What do we have from APC, Mr. Hoover?
APC met last Tuesday evening, I guess, due to the holiday. There was a consent agenda item for the Crew Car Wash Detail Development Plan that was approved. The one hundred and eighty-first Street PUD Amendment, the cottages on east, and the Trails PUD Amendment were all forwarded to this body with a positive recommendation. We also had public hearings on the Andover PUD. No one spoke in opposition to that, so that was also moved on to this body with a positive recommendation. We held a public hearing on the Grand Park PUD Amendment, Grand Park Village PUD Amendment, and we had no, no one speak on that. That was the end of business. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other council comments?
I just have one. I think we should, I don't know if you're going to uncover it, but I'll preempt you if you were. Thank our fire department for the increased rating they have and how, how that really impacts our homeowners and could impact our insurance rates and everything. But it also, given the fact that tomorrow is nine eleven, I think it gives us a chance for us to sit back and think about how fortunate we are to have the first responders, both police and fire department, in this community and the leadership that goes with that. It's just a, a great feeling to have those people in place and know the job that they do.
Yes, thank you. For, Dr. Keen is referring to the ISO rating that our fire department earned by doing certain things, and they are one of the top, in the top three percent in the nation in fire departments. Chief Reed, we want to congratulate you and your staff and all you do for the city. And that translates into savings for all our enterprises, businesses throughout the community because insurance companies look at that ISO rating to determine your rates. And the higher, the, the lower the rating, it's on a scale, but when your, your, your rate should see a decline as they look at this. And the rating is effective January first, December. Okay. But outstanding job. Thank you. All right. Any, anyone else? I've got a couple of other quick things. All right. Secondly, our chief of staff is currently at the Midwest US Japan Associate, Association Conference out in Iowa, and he is meeting with the council general from Japan, Ito, I think is how you pronounce his name. But the point is, he sent a note back, and he and a staff member, Amanda Rubadu, have had the opportunity to travel with Governor Holcomb, and we are the only Midwestern city represented at this conference. They've established some wonderful relationships. And, and the ma, the governor, Holcomb, has touted our city, and the relationships may span decades. We are telling the Westfield story, and we continue to lead Westfield into the global marketplace. And these are Todd's words, "We will bring the world to, to us." So that's pretty exciting. That's why Todd's not here tonight. And then, the last item I have, simply to welcome our Public Works Director, Jeremy Lawler, back into the fold. We're happy to have you back, and we're excited about all the work we have ahead of us, Jeremy. So you ready? All right. Well, welcome. Anyone else? That's all I have tonight. So there will be no mayor comments since the mayor is not here tonight. And so I, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion. Is there a second? Got a second for Bob Horkey? All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.